Born being present the first half of our annual town meeting will now be to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the general laws of the town of Granby?
Yes.
Please rise and select for Chairman Mr. Bale. Ladies and gentlemen, please.
My allegiance to the fight in the United States of America, to the law that reports standards on the actions undergone in the mission of the Grandby community.
our select board, our town administrator, town council, and to my left is our town clerk. If you are not present or non-voter, please sit in the designated areas for non-voters.
If you'd like to comment or discuss a motion, please raise your hands so that I may recognize you. You must wait for the microphone and then state your name and address so we can record it. Please do not direct your comments or discussion to any particular person at town meeting or the assembly in general. Please direct all your questions to me and I will direct them to the appropriate party. Lastly, please note in your handouts that you received a guide to the Granby Town Meeting. That is parliamentary procedure for those of you who are new or would like to learn things like how to do an amendment, or how to ask for a secret ballot, and other parliamentary The moderator will now recognize Madam Town Clerk for an announcement.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming out. I just want to remind everybody about Monday, May 21st is the town election. Remember, it's now here at the high school, and the polls will be open at 7:00 a.m. right through to 8:00 p.m. If you are unable to make those hours, and you're going to be out of town, you can do an absentee ballot, and that will be available till 5:00 p.m. on Friday, May 18th, in the Town Clerk's office. I don't know how you guys like the new poll pads. I think they're pretty good when you're checking in now. We're also going to be using the poll pads at the election. When you go for elections, though, you have to remember your precinct, okay? It's not like town meeting where you can check in at any poll pad. You do have to go to table one if you're precinct one, table two if you're precinct two. The reason for that is, is because our state and federal ballots are, we have two different ballot styles because we have two different representatives. So you have to make sure you go to your right precinct. If you're not sure about your precinct, you can certainly go on the website, or actually the back table, they could tell you what precinct you belong to. I think that's it, so just remember, May 21st, Monday, come out and vote. Thank you.
The moderator will now call on Mr. Mark Bale for a presentation.
It's our pleasure tonight to give an award. It's called the Golden Kane Award. There's one award for the oldest man in Granby, and one for the oldest woman in Granby. The oldest woman could not be here tonight, nor could her family. Her name is, is it Esther Donahue? And the oldest man could not be here tonight, but his wife and daughter and family are here. I found out today that our cameraman is actually his grandson, great-grandson. Okay. So the oldest man in Granby is Gordon Davy, and I'd like to have Mrs. Davy come up and present this award to her, along with the Golden Kane.
Good evening, everybody. Madam Moderator, yeah, I was going to do that. I move the town to vote, oh, sorry about that. I move the town vote to conduct the business of the meeting as follows. On May 14, 2018, consider Articles Two through 18, and on June 11, 2018, consider Articles 18 through 24.
Nineteen through 24.
Oh, nineteen. Sorry about that.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards.
I'll use yours.
Any opposing? Thank you. It passes by a majority unanimously. The moderator now asks Mr. Shonacki to present the motion under Article Two.
I move the town hear the reports of town officers, and all standing, and special committees, and act thereon.
Can I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion under Article Two passes by a majority unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to recess the annual town meeting, and call to order the special town meeting. Can I have a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? Great. A quorum being present, the special town meeting will now come to order. Madam Clerk, has the warrant been properly posted as required by the laws of the town of Granby? So now the moderator will now recognize... Mr. Bale, to present the motion under Article One.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to approve and authorize the Board of Selectmen and Board of Assessors to sign the payment in lieu of tax pilot agreement between the town of Granby and Granby Solar LLC.
Second, any discussion?
Yep. So the town of Granby is proposing to enter into a pilot agreement with Granby Solar LLC for a 3.98 megawatt solar array. The pilot will be for 20 years and generate $821,982. The annual payment is based on $8,500 per megawatt, increasing 2% each subsequent year until the end of the agreement. This is something we had come to you before, come before you previously to ask for authorization to negotiate, and this is the results of that negotiation.
Are there any questions or discussion?
Thank you, Madam Moderator. John Libera for the Finance Committee, going to be very brief. It's one of the obligations of the Finance Committee to comment, make recommendations on every monetary article, or any article that could have financial impact on Granby, and are here to tell you that the Finance Committee recommends you vote in favor of this article, and actually, we are in favor of all the articles as they are written for the special town meeting. If there are anything special that comes up during this, we'll make comment again. Thank you.
Any further discussion? In order for the motion to pass under Article One, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion under Article One passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Chief Mitchell to present the motion under Article Two.
Article Two, I move the town vote to transfer from retained earnings the sum of $35,000 for the purpose of funding the ambulance department personnel services budget for fiscal year 2018.
Second, discussion?
So essentially, what this money is for is it's covering part of the wages that was not essentially calculated in for the contract negotiations that went through this year. It also is covering part of the wages for a significant increase in call volumes that we've had in the past year.
Are there any questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article Two, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call Chief Wishart to present the motion under Article Three.
Madam Moderator, Article Three, I move to, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 014235131-000, the sum of $20,000 for the purpose of funding the police department personal services budget, $17,000, and expense budget, $3,000 for fiscal year 2018.
Second, discussion?
Much like Chief Mitchell said, this was also a contract negotiation year for the patrolman and the dispatchers, and these, this article and the next article would be fund, would be the funding to pay for the things that couldn't have been foreseen because the contract was negotiated after we made, we put our budgets forward to the town.
Any questions? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Chief Wishart to present the motion under Article Four.
Madam Moderator, Article Four, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 01423535131-000, the sum of $1,500 for the purpose of funding the dispatch department personnel services budget, $500, and expense budget, $1,000 for fiscal year 2018.
Second, discussion?
Exactly the same thing I said for the police department is appropriate for this moment, this article as well.
Any questions? This must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion under Article Four passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mrs. Shonacki to present the motion under Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from, oh, no one can hear me. Okay. Transfer, transfer from the account number 0111122512000, the sum of $18,000 for the purpose of the funding of the legal department for FY 2018.
Second, discussion?
This article is basically because we had two large lawsuits this past year. One got, one got settled, the other one was ongoing, that's the Granby Bow and Gun Club, and it was obviously very expensive, and we certainly do need the cash to consistently fight Granby Bow and Gun Club.
Any questions? The microphone's coming.
Robin Lamorter, 33 New Ludlow Road. Could you just clarify for me? I could have sworn I heard you say $18,000. My printout says 15.
That is true.
The motion changed.
The motion changed, $3,000. To date, the town has expended $20,615 so far.
Any other questions? In order for this to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Six.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from account number 01-912-5300-000, the sum of $16,728 for the purpose of funding the tuition for a Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School student for fiscal year 2018.
Second, and discussion?
Okay, this may sound like a repeat for some of you. I'll explain the basic things, and if there's questions, I'll try to answer them. In accordance with MGL Chapter 74, Section Eight, the town is required to allow a student to continue a course of study in another vocational school if the course is not offered at the vocational school at which the town has an agreement with. The student is considered a tuition student at the new vocational school. When we presented this last time, I think the school committee presented it the last time, there was actually, we had some back and forth about who was going to be responsible for this vocational student tuition, whether it was going to be the town or the schools. I thought it was going to be the schools, but I actually was wrong. It was the town that's responsible. So the deal is the law says if a student is currently enrolled in a vocational program, in this case, the student was enrolled in a vocational program at Smith Voke, that is not offered at our own vocational program, which is, we belong to the Pathfinder School District. It's, that program is not offered at the Pathfinder School District, so the state mandates that we tuition, pay tuition for that student to continue at Smith Vocational. So that's state law. It's not anything.
Is there any questions or other discussion? The motion under Article Six must, must pass by a majority, so all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion under Article Six passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Everin to present the motion under Article Seven.
Emery Everin, 18 Crescent Street. I'm the Chair of the School Committee. Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer from account number 01132578000, reserve fund, the sum of $49,163.03 for the purpose of funding the school department personal services budget for FY 2018.
Second, discussion?
This is the, this is the salary for the second grade teacher that was hired. As the second grade student population increased, which currently stands at 55, and we had only two classes coming up, so we had to hire a new teacher to, to be able to split the students into more accommodating and more reasonable educational setting.
Any questions or discussion? In order for the motion to pass under Article Seven, oh, I'm sorry. Your hands raised? Okay. Would you mind raising your hand so we can see you? Thank you.
Terry LaJoie, 160 School Street. I was just curious what the Personnel Services is normally used for? Is it normally used to fund wages for a teacher, or is it used for other purposes?
I am told that it's all wages.
Any other questions? So in order for the motion to pass under Article Seven, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call Mark Bale up for the motion under Article Eight.
Madam Moderator, I move the town will vote to transfer from account number 011925290000, the sum of $12,000 for the purpose of funding the Public Buildings Department Personal Services budget for fiscal year 2018.
Second, and discussion?
The purpose of this article is to move funds between spending categories. When the town votes a departmental budget, it votes personal services, expenses, and capital. During the course of fiscal year 2018, the town found it necessary to hire a part-time custodian to maintain its buildings. As a result of this hiring, personal services will now be overspent. The funding from this is from savings that were generated during the solid waste contract that was negotiated with Waste Management and the expense portion of the budget. This is just a transfer from one spending category to another. The total departmental, departmental budget will not be overspent.
Are there any questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article Eight, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Shonacki to present the motion under Article Nine.
I'll get close enough to the mic, I promise. Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to transfer from account number 01543577000, the sum of $3,000 for the purpose of funding the Veterans Department Personal Service budget for fiscal year 2018.
Second, and discussion?
In January, Long Term Director of Veterans, Veteran Services, John O'Connor retired from South Hadley, Granby, and East Hampton Veterans District. A replacement was hired, but terminated soon thereafter. In order to provide services for our veterans, the town received permission from the State Department of Veterans Affairs to hire our own local veteran service officer. As in prior articles, the town votes three categories for each, for a budget, personal services, expenses, and capital. This is just a transfer from one spending category to another. The total departmental budget will be, will not be overspent.
Are there any questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article Nine, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Anybody opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Ten.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate from free cash to sum of $1,400,000 for the purpose of funding the replacement of the high school roof, roof skylights, and roof ventilator units.
Second, and discussion?
This is to replace the current leak in roof that we have, skylights, and the ventilators, which are maybe not functioning at this time properly. The choice of free cash to fund this project was made, as that is what free cash is used for, one-time projects or expenditures. Free cash is not used for funding our budgets. Stabilization fund monies are not being suggested, as the town is considering using those funds to avoid potential borrowing the final 1.5 million for the school project in effort to avoid increasing taxes. Additionally, if the town reserve balances get too low, it will have a negative impact on our bond rating. As to borrowing for the project, the town departments are currently underfunded, and this project was to be paid with the borrowed funds, then the debt services plus interest would have to be raised for the first subsequent years for funding any department request.
Are there any questions? Over here in the bleachers? Could you please wait for the microphone, though?
Is that the replacement of the complete roof? Or I had heard that it was the gymnasium and over the office area.
It's for the complete high school roof.
Another question was over here somewhere? Any other questions? In the back?
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. First of all, it amazes me that someone from the school committee doesn't present this article. It shouldn't be a selectman, it should be someone from the school committee. It has to, it deals with the schools. Secondly, I just want everybody to realize that free cash is tax money that could have been used to reduce the tax rate. Free cash comes from prior year's taxes or miscellaneous receipts. So free cash is not free cash. We have to be very careful how we spend this money. So I just want people to keep that in mind. Now, I have a question on the schools. I keep hearing that the high school needs a whole slew of repairs. So if we spend this money on a brand-new roof, what else has to be done to the high school? Are we talking windows, boilers? I mean, what else are we talking about?
Rich, right now, the, the motion is specifically on the roof?
I know it's on the roof, but we don't want to put a brand-new roof on a school that's ready to fall apart. That's my question.
Well, that would be a comment, then. The question cannot be answered. Any other questions or discussion? In the front, in the front here, Mr. Nally.
Thank you, Madam Moderator. Steve Nally, 31 Pleasant Street. I'm the town treasurer. I would just like to put in perspective the purpose of using free cash rather than borrowing, as Selectman Sexton had mentioned. But first, I'd like to just modify the comments made by Mr. Damaraki, that free cash is also excess local receipts, it's not just tax levy. The point is, to put it in perspective, to borrow 1.4, 1.5 million dollars, we could do it a couple of different ways. We could issue bonds, however, that would incur maybe 100,000 to 150,000 just in issuance costs alone, together with interest. To do short-term borrowing, the favorable rates right now for short-term loans would be around 3%, and borrowing 1.4 million dollars for this project would result in about 130 or 140,000 dollars in interest alone. But furthermore, as Mr. Sexton pointed out, that the debt service has to be raised every year to pay for this, the debt service would easily exceed 300,000 to 340,000 dollars a year. thousand dollars a year. So that affects the available funds for departmental budgets in the ensuing years.
Thank you. Question in the back?
Seamus Connolly, twenty-one Ferry Hill Road, Granby, Mass. I would like to say that we do need a repair on the roof. These are your children and grandchildren. When I was sitting on that bleacher, I had fell because of leaking water. I almost, I could, you know what I mean, a kid could get injured. This is, this should not be a, this is a moral issue, not, you know what I mean, not, you know what I mean, should not even, we should not even be discussing the finances if your children are playing basketball or are playing soccer. It is a moral issue. Yes, it costs money. Everything costs money. I would like to say that, you know, my comment is, you know, unless, you know what I mean, unless, say some other kid is in, is playing basketball against Granby, and, you know, he slips and falls and breaks his neck, and that parent brings a lawsuit, and say this parent, this family is rich. Imagine that. Your town is broke. So I would suggest pay for that, you know what I mean, pay for that, pay for the, pay for the roof of the high school, and, you know what I mean, and, you know what I mean, because when, you know what I mean, because you do not want, you know what I mean, because then you're really screwed.
Thank you, Seamus.
Thank you very much.
Go ahead in the blue shirt. Microphone's coming.
Robin Lavorde, eighty-eight Chicagoe Street. I'd just like to know how you came up with that amount?
How you what?
How you came up with that amount? Is that too much for it? Is that enough?
Okay.
How'd we come up with that amount?
Mr. Lavorde, we received quotes for the various aspects, okay? Million dollars just to replace the decking, the membrane part. It's about another hundred thousand dollars to replace the skylights, about a hundred-and-fifty thousand to replace the ventilators. We have to have an architect do it due to the price of the contract. I figure that's going to be about another a hundred-and-fifty thousand. Then we put some in for contingency, because if the roof's been leaking, we don't know what we're going to run into once we start tearing the existing membrane off.
Is there one more question over here? Okay.
Gary Phelps, one-thirty-seven Bachelor Street. My only question is, I see another article coming up on free cash. Could you give us some idea what the balance of free cash is at this point?
Yeah.
It's one million, four-hundred-twenty-eight thousand, nineteen dollars. We will be appropriating the full amount of free cash between this article and the next article down.
Any further questions before I call for a vote? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anybody opposed? The motion under Article Ten passes by a majority. The moderator calls on Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Eleven.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to transfer from free cash to sum of twenty-eight thousand and nineteen dollars for the purpose of funding the general-purpose stabilization fund. This is a routine article which the town commits free cash to our reserves for funding future projects for unforeseen expenditures.
In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls for a motion to dissolve the special town meeting, and call to order the annual town meeting. Can I have a second? All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? So now the annual town meeting will resume with Article Three. So the moderator calls Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Three.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the select board to conduct the following activities for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. A, to sell after first given notice of time and place of sale, by posting such notice of sale in some convenient and public place in the town fourteen days at least before the sale of property taken by the town under tax title land of low-value procedure, provided the select board, whomever they authorize, to hold such public auction, may reject any bid then deemed inadequate. B, to apply for, to apply for and accept federal or state grants or monies that may be made available in the following select board to expend any funds received as set forth in appropriate application. C, to enter into a contract with the Massachusetts Highway Department for the construction and maintenance of public highways for the ensuing year.
Second, and discussion.
This is a routine article giving the select board the ability to conduct business during the course of the fiscal year.
Are there any questions? So the motion must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls Mark Bale to present the motion under Article Four.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize the various departments to receive compensation for services rendered as printed in the warrant for fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Second, discussion.
This article sets the rate for, of compensation for various elected boards in town. These are in Article Four, you can see, I'm actually going to read, yeah. Cemetery commissioners, so they could dig graves and maintain equipment grounds in the cemeteries at a wage rate that is no less than the minimum wage. Board of assessors to be compensated fifteen dollars per parcel for necessary field work and data collection for services rendered in connection with the revaluation and recertification process of involving one-sixth of the improved parcels in town. The members of the board of health or their consultants to receive compensation at a rate of thirty-five dollars per inspection or specific required activity. And the members of the planning board or their appointees to receive compensation at a wage rate of sixty-five dollars per inspection or take any action, well, that's, all right. So basically what this does is these different boards will be able to collect compensation at that rate for that work done.
Any discussion? So this motion must pass by a majority. So all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mr. Bale to present the motion under Article Five.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to authorize a conservation commission to charge a fee of sixty-five dollars for each site inspection deemed necessary by a quorum of the commission. Fees shall be payable to the Town of Granby Conservation Commission and deposited in the Conservation Hatch Fund.
Second, and discussion.
So it sets the fee for Conservation Commission inspections, that's how much they can charge for inspection for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Are there any questions? So in order for this to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Brooks to present the motion under Article Six.
Kevin Brooks, two-four-six State Street. I'm also a burial commissioner. I move the town to vote to accept the following gifts and calendar year two thousand seventeen for perpetual care of cemetery lots. Sergey and Tatiana Chasinko, one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars. Marilyn J. Bishan, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars. Curtis Osgood, seven hundred and seventy-five dollars.
Second? Do I need your motion? Is there any questions or discussion? In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority, so all those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls Mr. Sexton to present the motion under Article Seven.
Madam Moderator, I vote, sorry, I've moved the town to vote to authorize expenditures from these revolving funds for fiscal year two thousand nineteen without further appropriation. A, a parks oversight revolving fund from which the Parks Oversight Ad-Hoc Committee may spend forty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. B, a charter day revolving funds from which the Charter Day Ad-Hoc Committee may spend fifty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. C, a planning board fee revolving fund for which the planning board may spend fifty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. D, an after-school activities program revolving fund from which the superintendent of schools may spend twenty thousand dollars in revolving fund monies in fiscal year two thousand nineteen. E, a dog revolving fund from which the police chief may spend twelve thousand six hundred and five dollars in revolving fund monies for fiscal year two thousand nineteen. F, a library revolving fund for which the library commissioners may spend two thousand dollars in revolving fund monies in fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Second, and discussion.
The article sets the spending limits for various revolving funds authorized under the town general bylaws.
So in order for the motion to pass under Article Seven, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Mr. Shonaki to present the motion under Article Eight.
Madam Moderator, I move the town to vote to authorize town departments to enter into agreements in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter Forty, Section Four-A, for the fiscal year two thousand nineteen.
Second, and discussion.
This allows the towns, town departments to enter into intermunicipality agreements with the surrounding towns.
This must pass by a majority, so all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes by a majority, I'm sorry, unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mr. Albert Bale to present the motion under Article Nine.
Before I do the motion, my son Mark and I have both served with a gentleman on the Housing Authority who has been the backbone of the Housing Authority for twenty-six years, and he's retiring, and I wish George McKnight would stand up and take a round of applause. I move the town vote to amend the bylaws of the Town of Granby, Volume Two, Chapter Nine, Personnel Bylaw Appendix by decompensation plan pay schedule and substituting a new appendix D showing the nine pay grades and the ten steps to be effective July first, two thousand eighteen.
Second, and discussion.
It represents simply a two percent pay raise to keep us in line with the union membership.
Any questions or discussion? This motion must pass by a majority, so all those in favor of the motion under Article Nine? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator will now call on Chief Mitchell to present the motion under Article Ten.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to appropriate as offset receipts fire permit fees in the amount of one thousand three hundred seventy-five dollars for forest fire warden expense.
Second, and discussion.
This is essentially money that comes from the fees we charge for brush fire permits. The monies will be transferred into the forest fire warden expense and goes directly towards brush and wildland firefighting needs. Such needs may include wildland firefighting protective equipment, such as pants, shirts, gloves, helmets, and boots, as well as the purchase of tools and equipment specific to handling brush and wildland firefighting activities.
Do we still, we have a question over here?
Robin Lavorde, again, thirty-three New Ludlow Road. Could you just clarify the amount for me again, please?
Fourteen fifty. Okay, changed.
No, I believe that wasn't, that was a change.
Yeah.
Right. Was that a change?
Yeah. I was addressing the general question.
Robin, I think what you're noticing is there's a difference between the warrant number and the motion. This comes up a lot. Basically, the warrant is a warning that we're going to be talking about a particular issue and a ballpark figure about what it's going to cost. That number may go up or it may go down by the time we get to town meeting, so that's reflected in the motion. So the motion is the number that we go by.
Just to clarify the difference between what's in the booklet and the article I just read, that is because we received additional funds. It should be the fourteen thousand, fourteen fifty. There was an additional seventy-five dollars that was collected since it was published, the warrant was published originally.
So are there any further questions? So in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Thank you. The moderator now calls on Dave DeRozers to present the motion under Article Eleven.
Thank you. I move the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of two-hundred-seventy-eight-thousand, seven-hundred-and-fourteen dollars, authorized under Chapter two-ninety-one of the Acts of two thousand and four, for highway construction improvements defined under Chapter ninety of the general laws.
Second, discussion.
This is our routine money that we get from the state. It authorizes us to spend that money, and then we are reimbursed by the state.
It authorizes us to spend that money, and then we are reimbursed by the state.
John Labero speaking for the Finance Committee. This is the start of the Real Money articles for this portion of the town meeting. So rather than come before each one, I just want to say now that the Finance Committee is in favor of all the rest of the articles as they're written that are presented this evening. Thank you.
A question over here.
Robin LaMorter, 88 Chicagoe Street. Mine has two different amounts. Could you repeat the amount again, please?
The amount is $278,714, and it's probably a little different because it goes up and down a little bit depending on what the legislature votes.
Any further questions? In the front here? Right here? Terry?
Terry Lejoy, 160 School Street. Dave, I was just curious as to what your plan is for the monies this year. I know you usually go after heavily traveled roads as opposed to some of the side roads, more rural roads. Do you have a plan for that this year?
Yes, we do. We try to spread it out between both. Unfortunately, we get about half of what we really need to maintain the roads. That's why some of the smaller side streets are falling apart so badly, and even some of the major roads, but we're trying to stretch every dollar that we can. A few years ago, the state authorized 300 million. This year, it's only 200 million, and the number went down by a third, obviously, that we get. This year, we're looking at, with local funds right now, we're planning on doing Federal Road, which is really bad. My guys are out there every day patching it. And then Center Street, there's a section of Center that's getting to be really bad with local monies that we're going to do. And then when the Chapter 90 monies, which this money is still not available yet because they were a little late authorizing it this year. Normally, I'd do a bigger project at this time of the year as well and combine it with Chapter 90 and local, and I was forced to wait on that. We're just using the local funds now. The Chapter 90 money will be spent this summer, and that'll probably be Chicagoe Street, Upper Chicagoe. Also, it's falling apart, and we're out there patching it almost daily after rainstorms, and it's because of the traffic. On the minor roads, they don't require as much.
A question over here. Can you raise your hand again so we can see you?
Robin LaMorter, 88 Chicagoe Street. Please don't do Chicagoe Street. They go too fast now. They're just going to go even faster if you fix it.
Point taken.
Point taken, but that isn't the item that goes into our pavement management software to select what roads get needed.
Are there any further questions or discussions before we vote? In order for the motion under Article 11 to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. Any opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator calls on Mark Bale to present the motion under Article 12.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $175,000 for the purpose of funding the town's other post-employment benefits, also known as OPEB liability.
Second, discussion.
This article's an attempt to begin funding the town's liability for these benefits. The town, per the actual aerial report, should be putting approximately, or should putting approximately $125 million annually to cover the projected liability of $23 million as of July 1, 2017. Just to put this in a little bit of perspective, what's happened, I can't say when was this with Gatsby? Accounting rules for basically government changed. They became more on par with what the private sector does, and this is a good thing. One of the things that has scared people around the state is the fact that there are a lot of pension obligations, but there's also, in this case, like insurance and other things that are covered after employment that are covered for retirees. So the state wants everybody to have these things fully funded. I think only one municipality out of 351 in the state of Massachusetts is anywhere close to putting in the money they need. So what happens is, we're putting in money. Obviously, it's nowhere near $125 million a year, but we're working on it, and that tells the state, like, we're trying to do our best. But this isn't something that's actually, I don't know, if it's funded within my lifetime, I'll be really impressed, but at least we're doing our job here, trying to start it.
Any questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article 12, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. Anybody opposed? The motion passes unanimously. The moderator now calls on Mark Bale to present the motion under Article 13.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $307,795 as its apportioned share of the fiscal year 2019 budget for the Pathfinder Regional Vocational Technical High School District. The article is to appropriate, oops, sorry, I was already explaining.
Second, and now Mark will explain the article.
To accommodate kids who need or would choose to have vocational education, we belong to the Pathfinder School District. We're part of the district. We have a member on the school committee for Pathfinder. So we pay based on the proportion of students, of the student body at Pathfinder. The sum fluctuates anywhere, I've seen it maybe as low as 235 or 250. This is 307, but this is just paying for our students so they have vocational education.
Any questions? A question up front here.
How many children fall into that $307,795? What's the tuition at Pathfinder?
Emery estimates about, what did you say, 17,000 or 18,000? The tuition, it's not exactly, like, technically, it's not tuition, but the cost per student's about 17,000, which is on par for vocational education. I don't have the number of students offhand, but...
Does that include transportation, or is that in addition to transportation?
Does that include transportation, Chris? I can have Dr. Pace to come up if he has permission from Lynn.
So the answer to Terry's question is that $307,000 does include its tuition and transportation?
I don't know, about 20, I'm not sure offhand. About $307,795 divided by 17. I don't know offhand.
Is anybody now?
18 students, I remember.
About 18 students. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? Is there an, was there any opposing? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Mr. Everin to present the motion under Article 14.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $34,532 for the purpose of funding the tuitions for Smith Vocational and Agricultural High School students.
Second, and discussion.
There are two, last we talked for this year, there was one student. Right now, there was anticipated that there will be two students. Again, it's the same situation where the program that the student is in prior to moving to Granby is not offered at Pathfinder. If that changes, this could change, but that's where we're at. It's mandated by state law. This does not include transportation.
Any questions? Okay, we have two questions, so start over here.
Jeff Skelsky, 21 Taylor Street. What is the estimated cost for the transportation of the two students for the calendar year?
Well, this doesn't speak to transportation. This only speaks to their tuition. That's true.
The estimate is $100 a day. Per student? No, total? Go.
So for the two students, it would be, and this is my understanding, it would be about $100 a day. When we had one student, that was about $95, but adding another student is really nominal. It's a marginal change, so it would be about $100 per day because the service for such services, we're paying per day.
A question over here, and then we'll come back.
Robin LaMorter, 88 Chicagoe Street. You had money for the special town meeting going for the same thing, right? Or did they overlap, or what?
No, hold on.
This is another common thing that comes up. Special town meeting always deals with the fiscal year that we're in, so we're, this fiscal year will end on June 30th. So basically, what we voted on at the special town meeting took care of the year that's coming to an end. The annual town meeting where we're at now takes care of next year's budget. Okay, so that's why it's kind of confusing, but...
Do you still have a question?
Jeff Skelsky, 21 Taylor Street. So if I'm correct, for those two students, that's adding $180,000 up, no, what is it adding annually? Only 18? Okay, thank you.
We have a question in the back, on the bleachers.
Jennifer Bartos, 97 Porter Street. I'm just curious about the transportation. I know, and the first one for the 307 for Pathfinder, which I know we voted on, it was inclusive of the transportation. For this one, for Smith Volk, the $34,532, I'm understanding that that's just tuition, not inclusive of transportation? And I don't know if I can ask it, but I will anyway. For transportation, is that a separate article, or are we not responsible for transportation for school choice students?
The school, due to the accounting and stuff of town budget, the school will be responsible for the transportation costs, so that would be in their budget, so, which I believe we'll be voting on in June.
Follow-up question to that. So if we have students that are school choicing to South Hadley, to Belchertown, to other schools, not vocational programs, but school choice programs, we, I don't see articles about transportation for that.
This isn't school choice. This is a state mandate. School choice is an actual program with its own separate laws. This is, I think it's MGL 74, Chapter 74, and it just talks about vocational schools. So school choice kids do not get transportation, but this is required by state law.
I appreciate the clarification. If there's no more further questions, I will call the vote. All right, so all those in favor of the motion under Article 14, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Chief Wishart to present the motion under Article 15.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $44,022 for the purpose of purchasing a marked cruiser for the police department.
Second, and I'll open up for discussion.
This is the one marked vehicle that we try to replace on a yearly basis. We currently have seven cars, eight if you count the animal control vehicle. If we were to fund this, we would be getting rid of the oldest one on our fleet.
Any questions on the bleachers over here?
Jim Morion, 16 Alder Street. How many miles is on the oldest one, and can we actually skip a year and save this money?
I'm sorry, could you repeat the first part of that? Something to do with mileage, but I didn't hear it.
Roughly, how many miles is on the oldest vehicle?
On the oldest, well over 100,000.
Okay, most cars now get well above 100,000. Why do we use that as a benchmark instead of 150 or 200,000?
Because these are emergency vehicles. We depend on them to go to emergency calls. Some vehicles are, we can use them for non-emergency things, and so the mileage on those vehicles can go up. Like, for instance, we have an unmarked car now that replaced a vehicle that I don't even know how many hundred thousand miles it had on it. The non-emergency cars are one thing. It's the emergency vehicles that we really got to be careful with from a liability, and more importantly, a safety standpoint. Thank you.
Any further questions? In order for the motion to pass under Article 15, oh, over here. Can you wait for the microphone, please, so we can all hear you?
Terry Lejoy, 160. I'm just curious about the trade-in and whether or not this vehicle is worth trading in, but are you, and are you going to try?
We do trade the vehicles in. In the time that I've been chief, we did sell one vehicle outright at an auction, so we do trade it in, but we get minimal money for it. It all depends on the condition of the vehicle that we trade in. If that answers your question? And can I answer the second part of his question? I never answered it.
Sure.
To the second part of your question, the answer is, could we possibly get by without a vehicle? The answer is yes. The problem with that, though, is the one time that we've done that in recent history, we skipped one year and we bought two the next year. And then that year, that gap year that you're in where you don't have that vehicle, you can expect your maintenance costs to rise as well. I just realized I hadn't answered the second part of that.
So in order for this to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor? Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call on Chief Mitchell to present the motion under Article 16.
Madam Moderator, I move the town vote to borrow in accordance with MGL 44, Section 7, Clause 1, $225,000 for the purpose of purchasing a Mini Pumper Rescue vehicle for the fire department.
Second, and Chief Mitchell will explain this, and then I'll open it up for discussion.
The Granby Fire Department operates many vehicles and apparatus to perform our duties. Unfortunately, some of our... Unfortunately, unfortunately, some of our equipment are single-purposed or limited use in town. At the time of their purchase, they may have met the needs and was appropriate. However, over time, there has been changes, not only in the community and the department, but influences outside of the community that have made some of the apparatus outmodeled, inappropriate for many applications, and unnecessary. As such, it has come to be that it is no longer fiscally feasible to maintain certain apparatus and vehicles, particularly those that are seldom used and have limited applicability in our community. Moreover, after completing a comprehensive hazard risk and needs assessment of Granby with regards to fire and EMS services, it has been determined that many of our main fire apparatus are not capable of accessing all residences and structures in, in town. The Mini Pumper Rescue will greatly benefit Granby, as it will fill many roles, perform many tasks, increase the capabilities of the fire department, access hard-to-reach locations, and be less costly to maintain, especially when reducing our vehicle inventory and replacing two to possibly three other vehicles with just this one. Further, residents will feel that they are getting a better value in this apparatus, as it will be regularly seen responding to emergencies in our community. As chief of the department, it is my duty to ensure that I am fiscally responsible with the fire department budget, and that I am a good steward of our resources that I have been charged to manage. The Mini Pumper Rescue will fill both of these duties, as there will be cost savings over time in the maintenance line item of our budget, and in ensuring new apparatus will have the ability to perform many functions and meet the needs of Granby. It should be noted that the initial cost of this apparatus is approximately $225,000. I am looking to replace one of our larger fire apparatus, Engine 3. I anticipate a return from sale of $80,000 and possibly more due to the special nature of this apparatus, which will bring the cost down to $165,000 once we receive the monies from a sale. Supporting this article helps the Granby Fire Department in continuing to provide the best possible services we can to the residents, business owners, and those who pass through this great community.
Are there any questions? In the back, go ahead.
Rich Damaraki, Bachelor Street. Could you just tell us what this Mini Pumper Rescue vehicle can do that vehicles we have right now cannot?
Absolutely, and thank you for asking that question, because unfortunately, my little presentation was a little long to add all of that in there. This Mini Pumper is going to be used in many, many applications. Primarily, it's going to be our first-run vehicle for motor vehicle accidents. It's going to go to our utilities calls. It's going to be our source pumper for when we can't get a larger vehicle in certain areas. And we have many, many driveways in the community that we just can't get a traditional firetruck down. Having this vehicle is going to give us the capability to get a fighting chance in saving a residence, residential structure. It's going to hold much of the rescue equipment that we typically use on motor vehicle accidents today. It's also going to be our backup EMS vehicle. In the event that our ambulance goes out of service, or is out on another call, and we have paramedics in station available to respond to a call, they can do so with the paramedic ALS gear in a secure cabinet, as is supposed to be done by law.
We have a question over here.
Terry LeJoy, 160 School. You mentioned, how many vehicles do you currently have? You mentioned selling one. How many are you intending to sell? And then what are you going to do if you ever have a problem with that one Mini Pumper? What's your backup?
I'll answer the first part of that. I didn't quite hear the end of it, but I want to answer the first part of your question first. So I'll just list the apparatus that we have. We have three engines, Engine 1, Engine 2, Engine 3, aptly named. Tanker 1, Brush 1, Resource 1, Resource 3, Resource 4, and Car 1, which is my vehicle. This Mini will replace one of our larger engines, Engine 3. It will replace Resource 3, which is a utility body pickup truck. It is a 1994 Chevy, very old, and it is starting to show its age. And we are looking at options, though we haven't made the final decision to possibly replace, replace the brush truck with this. But that is still something we are considering. If we don't get this vehicle, quite simply, we're going to do what firefighters do. We're going to continue our mission and do the absolute best we can with what we have.
I, I asked if you have an episode with this particular Mini Pumper, where it puts it out of commission, what vehicle would you use as its backup, since you're saying this is multifunctional, and you've got a lot of others that you're saying are no longer functional? So what, what are you going to use for a backup?
Okay, let me correct that. I didn't say that they weren't functional. I was saying they are not appropriate for the current applications in the town. And to explain that, the engine we're looking to replace, Engine 3, is what we call, it's, it's a hose-reel truck. It's, it's a firetruck that has a big reel on the back. It has large diameter hose, and is capable of moving large amounts of water from water sources a half a mile down the road. Maybe that will get us to the incident scene, maybe it won't. If something happens to this Mini Pumper, this is not a frontline structural firefighting apparatus. Our frontline structural firefighting apparatus is Engine 2 and Engine 1. Engine 3's purpose, and, and I don't even want to call it an engine, we're going to call it a rescue for what it truly is intended to be, is going to be for those types of incidents that its size is appropriate for its use. Right now, we're maintaining many, many vehicles, and the larger the apparatus, the more it costs for me to maintain the apparatus. Going to something smaller that's going to get used more is going to be a lot easier to maintain than some of the larger apparatus.
We have a question up front.
Good evening. I'm George Randall of 52 Taylor Street, and tonight I'm going to burn a very delicate bridge. I'm going to apologize to the chief now before I go any further. I was a member of the Granby Fire Department for 34 years, and served on the majority of the truck replacement committees during that time. It was a great opportunity to do that, because we had the chance to review the demographics of the town and the statistics of the calls. As the town changed and the calls changed, and happened more often as they are, we planned and built our equipment to meet the needs and often plan around our available and projected manpower and resources. I understand the concept of the Mini Pumper, and I'm just going to pick on a military installation. They're used for a quick attack to save an airplane. On a military installation, if a structured fire came in, it was understood that the building was potentially expendable, but the plane was not. Back in the 80s and/or 90s, we discussed the Mini Pumper on several occasions, and we decided against it at that time. We didn't feel it was an appropriate fit for the town. In a perfect world, we would roll with all equipment you may need at a scene. In reality, this may not be practical. Each department is unique to itself. Here in Granby, we are fortunate to have a great fire department. We, we really do. With limited members and limited resources. I am of the opinion that if this Mini Pumper would be put into service, that we could potentially have a vehicle that could not sustain itself at a car fire, let alone a structure fire. It only carries 400 gallons of water, and it does not take long to go through that small amount of water. I realize that time is critical in any situation, but with this truck in service, this could put a crew in harm's way before the scene is safe. As a former fireman, my first commission, I'm sorry, my first concern was always for scene safety, and that has not changed, even after retirement. Unfortunately, I cannot support this truck, and I urge, I urge the voters to not support it as well. Many years ago, we set the fire department up on a five-year replacement plan. When a truck reached 20 years of age, it was time to form a truck committee and plan for the replacement. By the time a truck got through town meeting, and then the bid process, then the build process, the truck could potentially be approaching 30 years of age. Your oldest truck right now is 23 years of age. I think the town should plan ahead and replace this old truck. Pump has been rebuilt twice. There are issues with tank leakage and general wear that you would expect on a vehicle of this vintage. However, to replace that vehicle could approach $750,000, and in my opinion, would be a better expenditure of our tax dollar. Westover has two Mini Pompers. They have the manpower and the resources where we don't. Holyoke has two Mini Pompers that sit out in back of their station. They used to be used for responding to medical calls. When the call comes in, you're it. You want the truck to be fully equipped and ready to work when you get to a scene. When you have limited resources, you can't have a piece of equipment that could potentially get you in trouble. It was stated by the fire chief at his presentation on Saturday morning, that Engine 3 with a half-mile hose is a labor-intensive truck, and you got it, man. I, I agree. When you lay out that half-mile hose, you have to pick it back up when you're finished.
Mr. Randall, can you keep it on, on point and wrap it up?
I am. I'm going to wrap this up just shortly here. I'm of the opinion that this truck will not make the service delivery any better. It's a nice-to-have, not a must-have. When a fire shows up with this truck, they will need a full-size, fully-equipped fire engine or brush truck to respond as well, in order that they get the proper tools and equipment to the fire or emergency. Mini Pumper Rescue can't do the complete job of either truck. It can only do a portion of each. It will pump less water, carry less hose, carry less gear. Engine 1 is nearing the age of replacement. We should be replacing that. Before I support this article, and I'm not opposed to supporting it, I want to hear from the officers and men of the department for their opinion. Was there a truck committee formed to study this potential truck in the interim? I urge the voters tonight to vote this article down. Bringing this truck to a call could potentially be, could be potentially be like bringing a knife to a gunfight.
Mr. Randall, thank you very much for your comments, and I do appreciate those. However, I'm with the idea and mindset that we can't always do things the way we've done them just because we've done it that way. We need to do things the way that they're most effective, most efficient, most cost-appropriate. Some of the, the statements that you made regarding some of the Mini Pompers in other communities, those are other communities, and they're not Granby. I'm trying to do what is right for Granby. The, the Westover Fast Attack Apparatus are completely different than these apparatus that we're talking about here. They are specifically designed for aircraft firefighting. We're not aircraft firefighting, Mr. Randall. We're here to provide structural firefighting and emergency response and rescue. That being said, I'm not trying to bring a knife to a gunfight. I'm trying to do as much as I can with as much as I, as much as I can with as little as I have. The other point I want to make is that, yes, you're right, they're nice-to-haves, but you have to look at the long-term effect of what we're trying to do as a department. It's about protecting the citizens. It's not about having nice, pretty trucks.
Just comment over here.
Robert, or Bob, Camus, 2 Common Street. Saturday after I was at the Democratic thing, I went down to the Council on Aging and saw Mr. Mitchell's for what he showed us show. I wished everybody here could have seen that show. He had the greatest and best work going for him right now. I hope everybody listens to this and votes this thing in. Thank you.
Thank you. On the bleachers over here.
Dennis Hall, 239 Chicopee Street. Retired fire chief from the Granby Fire Department, over 20 years of experience. Chief Mitchell is correct. Times have changed, and apparatus has changed, and all of that. I have a couple concerns with his philosophy, which him and I had a conversation a little while ago, and obviously, we don't see eye to eye. My concern here is, it took us many, many years to set up one of the best fire departments in the state of Massachusetts. How we prepared, how we fought fires, how we supplied water, and how we purchased equipment. Through the years, it's been very, very difficult. We have not been just throwing money away, and I'm not saying that this article does that. We have been very, very tight on the funds. We've done an excellent job. My concern is twofold. One is, after my retirement about 15 years ago, a new chief came in, and he redone the fire department, how we fought fires. At which time, now we need mutual aid every single time we get a structural alarm come in. Unfortunately, and chief is aware, I, I talked to him earlier, we now have a new chief who comes in with new philosophies, and we're spending more money. My concern is, we spent over, I don't know, $350,000 a few years ago for an engine. Next time we replace an engine, it's going to be five, six, maybe $700,000. And to throw away a fairly good engine, I have a hard time with that. My experience is, I had two primary engines down at one time. I got a replacement from Amherst in South Hadley. This Mini Pumper just ain't going to do it. Yes, we have tight driveways, but you know what? Our trucks get down them. Unfortunately, being a fire service guy, it, it's not a good thing that I'm, I'm doing this, but I have to do what I feel is best in my heart. I can't support this article.
Mr. Hall, Chief Hall, I, I, as I did Mr. Randall, I appreciate your comments. One thing that I have to point out here is that, looking to the future of Granby, I'm also looking at what apparatus we need moving forward. How we operated 10, 15, 20 years ago is not how we're operating today, because things have changed, and we face many, many challenges. One of the tasks that I'm trying to work with right now is creating an apparatus and equipment replacement program. This is going to give you, the people, a better idea of what we need to replace and when we need to replace it. So it'll be much easier to predict what it's going to cost and when we're going to need to spend it. But again, it takes money to do this, but we need to work with the right equipment. It's, this is not, we have issues in this town, and, and I am trying to resolve them. I understand that things were changed when the new chief came in. I'm trying to fix some of the previous issues.
So now we have heard proponents and opponents of this motion, so I would like to move the question, unless somebody has something that they haven't heard yet to discuss. We have, you have, you have something new to add to the discussion? Right here?
Gary Phelps, 137 Bachelor Street. My question is on the Mini Pumper. Mr. Randall Mr. Randall mentioned capacity of 400 gallons. Now, I'm thinking about you're attacking a structural fire. Would 400 gallons be adequate for the rescue of people in a burning building? I don't believe 400 gallons would be adequate to actually get that structural fire under control unless it's a very early attack. But is this correct, 400 gallons?
It is, and you would be correct in saying that it is not adequate for a rescue or firefighting operation. Ladies and gentlemen, I want to make it clear, we are saying this is a mini pumper rescue. I do not want this confused with being thought of as being a first-run apparatus going to structural emergencies. We have apparatus designated for those reasons. There are identified areas in town that we cannot access with a true fire truck, that this mini rescue is going to be able to access. It has a 1,500-gallon per minute, which is the same-sized pump that is on our initial engines. The intent is to use four-inch supply line, to lay it from the beginning of the driveway down to the incident scene. The next apparatus arriving will hook up and nurse this mini rescue, and it will still be able to perform as a firefighting apparatus once it's hooked up to that water supply source.
So I'm going to now move the question. In order for this to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. So all those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? Thank you. So, again, all those in favor of the motion under Article 16, please raise your cards and keep them raised until I tell you. All set, thank you. So the motion passes by a two-thirds vote, 94 yes, 29 no. So the motion passes. The moderator will now call on Mr. DeRozers to present the motion under Article 17.
I move the town vote to borrow in accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 7, Clause 1, $150,000 for the purchase, for the purpose of purchasing a dump truck for the highway department.
Second, discussion?
The department has five trucks that go out every snowstorm, every ice storm. Two are straight dump trucks, this is one of them. Three are all-season bodies. The all-season bodies are a little bit more expensive to replace than this. This year, we're going for this truck for two reasons. One, it's got some severe corrosion on the wiring, and unlike trucks of yesteryear, 20, 30 years ago, once you started a diesel, it would stay running. The only way to shut it down would be to cut the fuel off. Nowadays, everything is computer-controlled. If you have one interruption in a circuit, that truck will be dead on the side of the road. In fact, we had a truck die on Carver Street this winter. I know the police department was getting a little excited with us because we were right in the middle of Carver and Brook Street, right near the intersection. We did finally get it up and running again, but without the wiring systems and the electronics on these new trucks, they won't run. And I can show you pictures of the truck. The wiring harness on this truck is severely corroded.
Are there any questions up front here?
Matt McCourt, 125 School Street. David, explain to me why is this corrosion happening when there's a lot of other trucks on the road that's just not happening? What's wrong with the truck that's going this way?
Nothing that it's wrong with the truck. It's in service in snow events for 12 to 20 hours. Every time it snows, you look at any sander that the state runs or that we run, we wash our trucks after every storm with a product called salt eliminator, too. It's to protect it, to get the salt off of it. If we didn't do that, there'd be nothing left. The truck would melt away before your eyes. But it's just normal corrosion for a sander. I mean, it's tough duty on any truck. We put on probably 180 miles. It's like driving from here to Boston every time it snows, or anytime there's a freezing rainstorm. We do our best to maintain them and to keep them corrosion-free. That one, it's got a lot of issues.
Any further questions up front here?
John Turizio, Kendall Street. Dave, what year is the truck, and how many miles are on it, if you know?
It's a 2001. We've got three in that vintage, and that's one of the reasons why I want to get it in the cycle to replace. I don't want, all of a sudden, I have three or half of my fleet dead and not dependable. I believe there's around, don't hold me to it, close to 80,000 miles on that vehicle, which is low mileage for a truck, but not necessarily low mileage for a sander.
In order for this to pass, it must pass by a two-thirds majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a two-thirds majority. Before we present the last motion, somebody lost an earring, and it was in the lobby. It's a little diamond earring, so it is up here if it's not in your ear. And you must prove, you must prove to me that you have an empty hole. So I have it if you're still here. The moderator will now call on Mr. DeRozers to present the motion under Article 18.
I move the town vote to raise and appropriate $80,500 for the purpose of purchasing a Dura Patcher for the highway department.
Second, and discussion?
Basically, this machine is what we used on New Ludlow Road, if any of you have seen some of the patchwork we did there last year. We would have been forced to overlay New Ludlow Road last year, mill and overlay, take off the top because it was getting that bad, and it was, the centerline longitudinal joints were getting opened up, and they were a little bit too big and deteriorating. That cracked seal couldn't take care of it. This process is something that we tried to try to save money, stretching dollars so we can extend pavement, reconstruction a few more years, and get a few more years out of the life of the pavements. It worked well on both projects that we tried it on. It also can be used for just normally filling potholes at all times during the year, but more importantly, the justification that I used to bring this forward to the Finance Committee and the Capital Improvements Committee was dollars and cents, basically. By saving, it costs us $150,000 just to mill and overlay a mile of road. If I can put that off even just a few years, if I can buy five years more on a road by putting this product down on New Ludlow Road, for instance, I'd do two roads that's more than paid for this tool. It's just another tool in the toolbox to try to stretch our dollars.
Is there any further discussion up front here?
Linda Robert, 34 Pleasant. I'm wondering, is this for a hot patch or a cold patch? As we know, cold patches don't really work.
Actually, cold patches do work. If they're done right, and they don't get damaged before they are fully set. We use a high-performance cold patch. It does work. Most of the cold patch we put down in the wintertime stays in place. We don't dig it up in the springtime. It isn't the cold patch of old. Years ago, I agree with you, the cold patch wouldn't last for just a couple of months. But this is an emulsion product, and it's liquid asphalt. It's the same type of asphalt used many applications. In fact, the state is going with colder in-place asphalt now. They lower the temperature with different chemicals to make asphalt workable at lower temperatures.
Follow-up question? Go ahead. It's got the microphone.
As we know, when they put down a patch, and the truck runs over it after, the truck tires pick up a good part of that patch every darn time. So it's not really staying where it's supposed to, and that's our problem. We're throwing money away on something that doesn't really hold.
It does hold. Look at the patches on the Ludlow Road. They're there. They lasted over a year now. This isn't something we brought forward without testing it and making sure it would work. Getting back to patching, we're forced to use what we have. We have to fill a pothole. And I agree with you, if there's water in the hole, it does not stick well, it doesn't compact well. Until the cold patch is compacted properly, it won't hold. I agree with you there. But in most instances, we'll go back and re-patch a couple of times over the winter. Most of the patches that were just done on Chickaby Street, Fred Rule Road, we're done with cold patch. Now is the season we can get hot patch, and we are using hot patch. Obviously, it's better, and it's better to do the patch when it's dry. But we don't have that luxury in the winter, in the middle of a rain event. If there's a large pothole, we have to fill it.
You have a question in the back?
Dave, are we replacing a Dura Patcher now? Do you have one now, an old one?
No, it's a new process to try to extend pavement lives. Like I said, we wouldn't have even been able to pave Porter Street last year. The money was earmarked to go to New Ludlow Road. We tried this process to see if we could extend the sections on New Ludlow Road a little bit longer, and it worked, for the most part, many areas that were showing a lot of alligator cracking that we would have had to mill and take up.
But I'm saying, how did you apply it? Do you have a Dura Patcher now when you want to replace it?
We rented one for a short time. The process is, I would have already had one renting, doing some additional patching with it already. You can't get them. There's not many units that are out there for rent.
Okay, so you rented one.
And the other problem is, as we just talked about with rain, if it's raining out and you've got a Dura Patcher rented for a week, and you've got five days' worth of rain, you can't use it.
We have one last question.
This is Terry Lajoie, 160 School. So how many times use will you get your money back? So in other words, instead of renting, how many times did you have to rent? How many times would you use it and actually not have to rent and save that money?
If I can extend the pavement life on two roads, two miles of road, five years, I will have saved the town $80,000. That's just two roads for a mile for five years. And I know we can do way more than that with this on a number of different smaller roads. I mean, it's your choice. I mean, I'm trying to save you money. I'm trying to make the dollars work because we just, I just told you earlier, we took a 30% reduction in Chapter 90 from a couple of years ago. We aren't spending enough money on road repairs. I'm trying to find every possible, believe me, my guys would prefer not to do this. It's messy work. You get emulsion all over yourself. You're full of oil. It's messy work. It's not easy. They would much rather have a contractor come in and put down new pavement, but it's a lot more expensive.
So in order for this motion to pass, it must pass by a majority. All those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you. All those opposed? The motion passes by a majority. The moderator will now call for a motion to adjourn the annual town meeting and reconvene it on June 11. Second, all those in favor, please raise your cards. Thank you.